Ladies and gentlemen, we have some directors here that just can't get enough punishment today, I guess, so.
They might have things to contribute to the discussion today, so.
Very good, and I'd like to welcome our citizen guests, welcome to our meeting. And I'm sorry we kept you waiting, and I'll turn it over to you.
Gratefully, I'm grateful that you all took a little break, because I could tell it was time. It's a long meeting, I appreciate you all sticking with us for a few, a little bit while longer, so we can get this stuff marketed and hopefully get on the right track. Do we have a slide that we're going to present up here, Stephen, or was I just going to do? I don't need it, I mean, I think everybody has copies.
How do I turn on my TV?
Well, it's probably here if we don't.
You have a hard copy, you should have a hard copy.
Oh, okay, that's all I need.
It's vacancy.
Okay.
Well, we, from the last meeting, there were a couple of items left that we still needed to get hashed out. And that's what our intention is today, to try to get a little bit better idea from you guys about the parcel on River Hills, as well as exactly what we're selling, and also how any potential incentives might be structured. So if you want to go ahead and flip on the next page. We're talking about these two items, which is, of course, the 705 River Hills parcel, and the city incentive recommendations. The page three, the next page, is just a descriptor. And a picture tells a thousand words. I think it's a lot better, go ahead and flip on the next page, you can sort of see what those are. So we're now, let me catch up with the slide, we're on page four now, on the PowerPoint. It's in front of me?
Is that working now?
Oh, it's not in there? Yeah, the USB port.
Well, someone moved it one page, didn't they? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not long, so just say next slide, and somebody click it.
On the paper.
So if you want to look at the map, you, the three parcels, the, there's, there's the upper parcel, which is 2.99 acres, and then there's the yellow parcel, which is, was an easement for road, right-of-way. And then the lower portion is the area that we had discussed about potential park, and having us a potential park. We just want some clarity, you know, in terms of, I can give you a recommendation in terms of what we've, how we feel, we've walked, we've, the property multiple times, spoke with a number of developers, on what they kind of thought, and then, of course, spoken with you guys in terms of what your needs are, and what you think would be best for the community. And I think the way we market this is that the blue parcel is what we take to the market, but we also let developers know, because we don't know what we don't know. Developers can be very creative, and what we're trying to do is have some sort of a public-private partnership, where we're going to make that parcel attractive enough for developer, and allow that developer to use his or her vision to determine what's going to be the highest and best use from a sales standpoint for whoever might be residing in those, in the complex. And so, we want to try to allow enough flexibility on how we're marketing, and what you guys are going to allow, to give them some room to come up with some ideas on how best suited, where there might be, for example, some parking overlays between that park area. Because right now, you have the issue where there's no parking at the park, so we're wanting that developer to help create some parking and some easement ingress and egress to some park, also to help with some of the parking that might be an overflow visitor parking for theirs, because that's, that 2.9 acres is fairly limited. So, where parking's going to be an issue there, and so they're going to be looking for some sort of relief on that parcel, and if we're allowing them to have additional areas that might be joint parking between park and the residence of the blue piece, I think that would be something that would be advantageous. But, our recommendation is that we market as the blue piece, with the idea that there potentially could be additional parking on the yellow right-of-way piece. Of course, we're going to have to vacate that. And then also, if you look on the next slide, you'll see there is an EPC wetland area, which you're not going to, you're going to struggle to be able to build closer to the river than that, but that right-of-way is fairly narrow, so there might be some necessity to encroach from the yellow piece, the right-of-way, above the EPC line, for, to allow for maybe two or three feet for additional parking. So, we're not, we don't want to sell that piece, or that's what we're recommending, but we are recommending that if there is the necessity for parking, additional parking requirements, and the right-of-way does not, which it probably won't, allow for a proper ingress and egress from parking spaces there, that we do, open the discussion for the developer that we would allow there to be some encroachment on that, above the EPC line for parking, permeable parking.
So a shared space.
Correct, that's our idea. But, I mean, listen, I'm not the keeper of all ideas, and you get a develop, developers can be very creative, so I really want as liberal an interpretation as possible, that would allow them to say, "Well, what about X, and what about Y, that we can sort of work with it." I prefer that to have an etched in stone, that say, "You can't do this, and you can't do that." Obviously, the EPC line is going to be something we're not going to be able to go beneath, because we need to be able to allow area for park and walk and boardwalk and things.
Can we, it might be best to wait until he, and then, certainly, yeah.
And we're going to have the Colonel come up, and he's going to talk a little bit about, how is this going to be paid for? And this is from our own experience in dealing with other types of projects like this. Colonel, do you want to talk, you want to?
Yeah, I just want to add to this one here, Mr. Mayor and council members, is that when we walk the land, the green portion, you see those two parcels, I'm sorry. I can project pretty well. God-given gift. The parcels on the, the green parcel's the lower one, you can see the low parcel there. We walk the land, I mean, I think the city needs to decide, you know, we want to keep those parcels, because we want to put in a boardwalk or something like that down there, or you want a pier. And if you give it away, you may not be able to get it back, so to speak. And that's when we walk the land, there, those, the parcel to the right, the low parcel to the right, is a very good piece of land there. So, that's why we're coming back to you, again, to ask you what you really want to sell. And that's what's Eric's point, Eric kind of outlined exactly what we, our recommendation's going to be.
Well, if I remember correctly, and the council members are good about telling me when I don't, so, I think we had consensus that this is what we wanted to do, that we were comfortable developing the blue parcel, but we wanted to try to preserve access to the river and for the public.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think we have consensus on that, am I right, James?
When we walked away, when we walked away, you basically said the whole thing. And that's why we wanted to come back and make sure that's exactly what you wanted to do.
This is a difference of ownership, of is the developer owning that green portion, is the city owning that green portion?
I don't think we ever said we wanted to give up the green portion. If we didn't make that clear.
Well, maybe we didn't make clear about the ownership part or something, but I think it's our intent that we, that we want public access, if we can, if it's possible, we'd like to have public access.
And the little twist here also is that EPC line, that if you're going to talk about the right-of-way, that there might be some necessity to encroach above the EPC line for additional parking. We want to be able to also advertise that, that it's not necessarily for sale, but this would be a public-private partnership type of situation, where there might be some use for shared parking, and that developer would be obligated to develop that.
Right, and if the project comes before us as some kind of P3, and they are going to establish public and private parking on that yellow right-of-way, and we have to vacate it, but we're in love with the project, and it's everything we want it to be, I would imagine we would be willing to vacate the right-of-way to get what we want.
Fine, okay.
I think, Councilmember Abel.
I'm not sure I quite understand what you're saying about including parking in the EPC wetland line. What does the EPC wetland line delay, doesn't that mean that we can't put something like parking there?
Correct.
Right, so we're not going, the EPC wetline, wetlands run, line runs from the river, northbound to the line. So we're not talking about going beneath the line, in between that zone that you can't build. We're talking about, there's a portion that's in the green, that's north of the line, but in between the road, the right-of-way, exactly.
Right between, right between the EPC.
Correct.
Wait till she's, are you good?
I understand.
Okay.
I've got to stand up and point.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm getting confused on that. Are you talking this or this?
Well, the map's a little deceptive, because the westbound right-of-way has already been vacated, my understanding.
Right, so this part goes all the way to the river. Correct, Carl?
No. No.
This is the canal, I mean, the ditch, drainage ditch, correct?
No, the ditch is farther to the left. I, if I understand.
It's not on the map.
If you go back one, maybe you go back one, Steve, that next, the one before.
That's where I'm getting.
Right there.
My 50-year-old eyes are what.
I mean, this looks like this is the angel, right here.
That is the angel.
That's the angel right there. And this is.
So here's the, here's the bridge. Here's the bridge, so the ditch is going to be a little bit farther in here.
Okay.
Okay, because that's, that looks like the bridge to me.
Okay, so you're talking, when you talk about the green and the additional parking, are you meaning down in here in the right-of-way, or are you meaning up in here?
No, when you go back to the next, the next slide, please, look at there, at the, let me.
Come on up. Does anybody want to buy a valve?
So.
Sorry.
The EPC, the EPC line runs here. Everything on this portion of the EPC line, we're, this, there's nothing you can do about it, this is not buildable. So what we're talking about, you might need a foot or two here, north of the, of this EPC line, inclusive of the right-of-way, to be able to properly complete parking.
Okay, so we're not talking about up in here, north of that right-of-way line?
No, in fact, this has already been, my understanding is this has already been vacated. The, hereover has already been vacated, that's out of the question anyway.
We knew that was going to come back.
Is that clear to you?
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
I do too, thank you.
Got it now?
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Does that vacation, is that from the lawsuit?
No.
No, that was on the other.
That's on the other side, okay, all right.
Yeah, that went to the Shell station guy.
EPC wetline, wetland line, going up towards River Hills, that is the runoff from, what's that lake?
Springdale.
Springdale Lake. Lake Springdale.
Lake Springdale. Is that the runoff from that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you, well, let me just make sure we're understanding, talking about the same thing. The runoff comes this direction.
Correct, yes.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Now, we've listed the blue area to sell. What happened, I wasn't aware that the EPC line encroached in that. Is that a problem?
Well, you, before you had everything listed, but then it was sort of trying to untangle all.
No, no, I realize that, but I mean, is that, I mean, is that, what's that going, how's that going to impact the viability or the salability of the blue area?
The biggest issue that you're going to have with the blue area is parking. And so, what we're trying to do is by suggesting that potentially, a developer might want to vacate this parcel, and a little bit of north of the EPC line, is to add additional parking.
So it's not within the EPC?
You're talking about add parking for the blue parcel?
It might be shared parking, it might be a shared parking between a park and the developer. And we're going to get into this a little bit more, where the Colonel's going to talk about how the funds are going to flow, because it doesn't really necessarily make sense that developers will, "Well, great, I'm going to come in here and do this, but why should I build this parking for you?" So, there's going to have to be a little bit of give and take on how that's going to, that's going to work for them.
Okay, so Colonel, excuse me, just before we move on from this, I want to make sure everybody's clear before we charge forward, we're good. Okay, thank you, Carl.
Okay.
I don't want to move on and then find out this.
Okay.
Listen, I'll do it. You got it, you can draw?
I can do something, sometimes. Okay, yeah, all right. So the final thing that we're looking at is sort of incentives, but really, it's probably not the right word, but looking at identifying funding for the city that can be used to enhance economic development area beautification, because our, when we look at this from a developer's side, is that if he sees a city is going to, is going to make progress in beautifying around the area there, that he's willing to come in and do his piece as well. And so that's what we're looking at as far as money goes. You know, for instance, the filtration pond, you know, trying to make that a little bit better space. I think everyone wants that too as well, will certainly entice the developer to come in, especially in the south side as well. And then the other thing we talked about is, you know, eventually the pier and the boardwalk down that way, and trying to make that better as well. So the idea is, where do you get the money from? So, I looked at is your TIF, your tax increment financing. So the city, you have a low-interest loan, especially compared with the, the way the rates are moving up. So, one idea is to continue to pay down, because you came from a 25 million to 12 million, continue to pay down that loan, but abide a little slower, you know, not give out as much as you're putting in each month, take the remainder of that money and use that for development and beautification. That's just an idea that we have, so you've got to have some way of getting funds to make these things work. And so, that might be something you could think about as a possible recommendation.
So in other words, instead of taking 100% of the proceeds, using that to pay down the TIF money, there'd be some holdback that would be given back to the developer to help develop these shared easements and park development?
We have, as part of our ongoing budget, we have a number of things, because we, this is not the first time we've thought about where are we going to get the money to fix this pond up and build the connecting. So we have a couple of possibilities, we have not reached conclusions on, because we don't know which way some of it's going to go. We have a $5.4 million land sale under negotiation now, that we hope to close between, before September 30th. Those funds, if they come around, that, those funds are not earmarked for anything. Now, we've got some, at least some of us have some hopes, that we're going to peel some of it off for seed money, for buying property for police station in the future, but some of those funds could be used for this. We have, in the past, the council has several times committed to the sale of all, all the proceeds from the sale of CRA property would be used dollar-for-dollar for paying down the debt. And that was seen in the past as being very important, the community demanded that, the council was behind that. Diverting some of the TIF may be a possibility, but taking money from the revenue of the sales, at least in my opinion, and I'm not, it's not me, but in my opinion, that would be more difficult politically, that would be difficult, because it would be seen as a reversal of what we've been saying for 20 years.
We had the same conversation in Curtis Hickson, and understandably, but it's sort of one of those situations where the revenue that you got at Ad Valorem from the new development never would have come, had those improvements not been made at Curtis Hickson, and so there, these concessions had to be, had to be made in order to get that additional.
Now, now, we're, we are going to have this conversation, and you need to, you need to, I hate that. You should understand where we are in the discussion, so that you can pass this on to developers. And we just had some of this discussion an hour ago during the budget. We are working with Kimley Horn to develop some design concepts for this. Springdale Park, or Lake, Spring, Lake Springdale, I like, that's the best way to put it. Lake Springdale, and what we can do to beautify that, dredge it out, keep the water fresh, the, you know, make that a nicer area, connect it all, Councilmember Abel suggested to connect all this, put some public features into this to kind of connect the project all together. We don't have design for that yet, but we're getting it. And we are budgeting for Kimley Horn to do this, they're, I'm told that they're already kind of doing some of it, but we're going to spend the money to do that, there's, we've been unwavering on that. And so, once we get these design concepts, we have no idea what this is going to cost. Do we need $2 million, do we need, you know, what do we need? And then we'll have to get to the discussion that you're, that you're bringing us to now, is how are we going to get that? Are we going to spend TIF money, we're going to divert some of that over here? I suspect we might. But, we're not, we're committed, I think, I think, don't let me outrun my skis here. I think we're, we have consensus, and we're committed to doing these beautifications and these enhancements. I think we're comfortable with you telling the developer the city's committed to this.
And that's what we're telling the developers.
Yeah.
Committee, I mean, committed to doing pedestrian connectivity, because we talked to Kimley Horn on that too as well, and hopefully they'll provide some renditions here shortly when they're on your payroll. And so that's what we're telling developers too as well, because that's what they want to hear, really.
We understand that the ability to be able to execute is extraordinarily important because of history. And some of the folks that we've been speaking with have exactly this type of history of projects that have done exactly this type of work. I will tell you that they also tend to be a little bit more controlling, because they have been in the situation before. So they will, they'll tend to say, "Well, we love your plans, but we're not going to wait for you to execute it, we want to execute as a part of our plan, and here's how it's going to, it's going to go."
Well, and that's fine. If they want to come to us and say, "We want to pay less for the property, but we're going to dig the pond out for you," we get to the same place. And that makes it easier, because for us to do anything, we're not that nimble as a government. So for us to divert TIF funds over to dig the pond out, you know, with all the legal requirements, that takes a month of Sundays. But if they say, "Well, I'm going to give you a low-ball offer on the land, but we're also going to dig the pond out and put a fountain and all that as part of the deal," that might be better.
And that's exactly what we're getting from the, you know, the concept, we always say concept versus the price. Give us a good concept, we take it to the council, and they'll, they'll take a look.
That's great, and if, in fact, it may even be better, if the developer does that as part of their, that might be an even better deal.
Exactly, I mean, sometimes in kind, that, like he says, you can do things, a builder can do things faster than, than we can. Although, we have the ultimate say at the end, but the process for us is completely convoluted compared to what it is for him.
I feel like I'm speaking for you guys, and I don't need to do that. If there's something that's not right here.
I'm with you 100%.
Okay. Gil?
No, it's, I don't disagree with what we're saying at this point. But the whole bottom line is, we kind of know how much, we're not going to, it's difficult for us to do anything, and that becomes a question of dollars and cents, and it could be C E N T S or S E N S, S E N S. So what, it doesn't make sense for us to do that, and how much does it cost, is it going to cost us? So we have to, we have, we can't make a whole lot of promises until we see what it's actually going to cost to do it. But in the meantime, yeah, we're up to the concept, and see where it goes.
And that's the important thing, I mean, we're not in any position to be trying to give you a classroom rendition of finance, government finance 101. We don't, we didn't expect definitive, all we wanted was some guidelines to be able to say, "I think that they're going to be okay if we handle it X in this way or that way." And I don't think it's really necessary for us to cover these impact fees and these other things. It sounds like they already have a grasp on, on, I think we've got some, a good idea about how to, how to go with it.
That's all we have.
Okay. Councilmembers, who'll start down here, Councilmember Abel?
I had to leave early the last time you all came, and I guess I was just wondering, given the climate where, you know, development has more hurdles than it has in previous times, how much do you think that, for this particular piece of property in its best use, how much do you think we need to have incentives that we offer? Or do you think that, you know, now that we're sort of more of one mind about what to do with it, or, you know, closer to that, do you think it's that necessary to employ incentives here?
Potentially, but we always spoke earlier about this, and I think, there's two ways you can, there's a, there's the hard financial aspect of it, but you can't divorce also the beautification aspect of it, because that becomes, increases the value for the developer that might be looking at that. So, I think incentive probably should be more directed towards that shared goal for the community and the developer, that, yeah, we really want this, and we really want this. The developer has in mind, very selfishly, that I can sell this for additional $5,000 or $10,000 a unit, and you guys are looking at it from the standpoint of, we want something better for the community, and this is where you have concentric surface overlapping. And that's where, I think that's where the, where we should be looking for, trying to offer incentives.
So the incentives are sort of based around getting a clear idea of what we want to see there, so we can work with the developer to have that overlap?
Yeah, and don't overlook the developer, because as long as we paint that, or give them a fairly blank canvas, they might come back with some ideas that none of us are thinking about right now.
I see, so give them the opportunity to use their creativity.
Right.
Thank you, Councilmember Donahue.
Yeah, is there anything that we should be doing now to show our, you know, willingness to help out? I mean, is there, and, you know, we talked last year about knocking down that brick wall between the Springdale Lake, Lake Springdale, and the Enigma property. Is that, I have no idea how much that would cost, I'm, don't, don't shoot me. Is that something that if we started doing those things now, that that would help, or to show them our sincerity? Or do we really, really, really just need to sit and wait until you come back to us?
I would sit, I would sit and wait, but the Kimley Horn piece could be.
Yeah, that's going to happen.
Absolutely, because now you get another creative type in, again, pictures tell a thousand words. And I know the reaction that we received from you guys last meeting, just showing you some conceptual, how you guys react to that, the developer's no different, you just start getting the creative juices flowing. And so if Kimley Horn comes back with something that is, that is, wow, we didn't think about that, and the developer now starts seeing the vision, it could, it could definitely help to escalate the movement of the property.
What sticks in my mind is what you said about Ulayli, that he, it was a horrible piece of property, right? By all, by all, whatever we all thought was going to be, ever use that for, was never what it is now, until the city showed what it was willing to do around it. That, so we need to take on that mentality.
I think there are additions from Kimley Horn, there are additions, because you have to have buy-in from some of the players there, you know, Windix, you know, have to have buy-in. So, we've reached out to Chris Wild there at Wind Dixie, and we're waiting for a Kimley Horn rendition, so I know it's going to be a little bit, but to get that buy-in, so we can show the developers the connectivity, pedestrian connectivity that goes down. I don't think there's any work that has to be done, but renditions are showing, this is what the city has in mind, is, it goes a long way with the developers.
Vice Mayor?
I think you got the right idea.
Councilmember Chambers?
Same thing, I'm excited that, that, I think we need to show that we're willing to listen to whatever comes out there, and entertain anything, so.
It's our intentions from today's meeting to go back to our graphic people, and modify the plans that we had already discussed at the last meeting, again, because this, all we're trying to do is get the juices flowing.
That's it. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did think of something else. The last go-around we had with the 56th Street properties, we came back with some incentives, like 10-year moratorium on property taxes, that's probably a non-starter, that type of thing. So just keep that in mind.
Not after the last four hours we've had.
Just keep that in mind as we're, as you're discussing with these, with the developers, that if they get too far in the left field.
Well, I mean, we had, this next one, I mean, we wouldn't go after Ad Valorem, taxes, any of that kind of stuff, so, because we know that's where we're going to make it right at the end. But these are kind of some of the things we looked at, minor stuff there, water, impact fees, you know, mobility fee, which can be waived, is usually waived anyway, and those kind of things for the developer. But I think the biggest thing is, we talked about, showing them what the city is going to do, you know, what they, what the vision of the city is, and I think that goes a long way, so.
And to let them know that if they have a great idea, they should be, feel free to bring it to us.
Now, you guys made it clear last time, and also today, that Ad Valorem is off the table. Is there anything else, like, impact fees are off the table, is there anything else that, you're like, this is off the table?
No, I think we're willing to have conversations.
We're willing to talk.
To get what we want. Now, I mean, if somebody's going to come in and build a dry cleaner, I don't know how much we're going to. But somebody wants to come in and build a, you know, Florida Avenue.
Again.
That's right, we're still going for that brewery, okay?
Dollars and cents, what's it going to cost?
It's, yeah, I mean, we're willing to have a conversation on the rest of it. I think that Ad Valorem wave would probably. I think that Ad Valorem waive would probably, as the Vice Mayor said, probably be unpalatable to the public.
Unless it was.
But, I think the, the other fees.
Some of these impact fees can be.
Yeah, yes, yeah. And, you know, it depends on the project. If it's a CVS, we have a few of those already, so I don't know how much we want to waive, you know.
Car wash.
Car wash.
It worked out really well for us with Amazon.
Yes.
They negotiated, we needed that street, they didn't want to pay what they did in tree mitigation, it was a win-win for us. Yeah.
Gentlemen, I do want to, we have a couple of members of the public here, so are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? I see nobody jumping up.
All right.
Are we, we're good, you're comfortable where we are?
We're square.
City Manager? We're good. City Attorney, anything we need to be? Gus, you're neck-deep in this. Brian, everybody's good? Carl, you're very familiar with this property, you're good?
Mike raised his hand.
I just wanted to make a comment, if I could.
Yes, please.
Good afternoon, Mike Sherman, Community Development Director. I just wanted to remind the council, and I know you all know that, some of the incentives that we may do, or how we want to spend our money in the CRA, our plan may need to be updated to reflect that. So, what's in that plan is how, what we can do and how we fund that has to be in the plan itself.
What are you talking about, the land use plan?
So, the CRA plan.
CRA plan.
CRA plan.
Yes, sir. So, if we're going to use, waive impact fees, but if somebody else is going to pay their impact fees, we've got to discuss that in the plan. And if we're going to use the TIF money for incentives, we've got to have those incentives in the plan itself. And then we've got to reflect that all in the capital plan too, how we're going to spend money if it qualifies for a capital budget.
Okay, so I would ask that you, I'm assuming, I'm pointing at you two, I would, I would ask that you three huddle up here, and I don't know who needs, whoever needs to be involved in that discussion, and bring us something back to talk about, because what I don't want to happen is, these guy, what's going to happen, I hope, this would be a great problem to have, these guys are going to bring us back a big fish that we really want, and they're going to demand, you know, free something, and we're going to be all excited and giddy and say, "For that, we'd be willing to do it," and then we can't.
I mean, some of that may be in the plan already, I'm not familiar enough with it, but I just wanted to remind you all, whatever we do in our community redevelopment area has to be in the community.
Well, would you guys, please take a look at that? I thought I had heard that we'd already done some of this, but, yeah, yeah, so, but let's please get on this now, so if there's something we need to do, we can be busy doing it while they're out looking for the big fish.
Well, I've started looking at other local governments' incentives, and the one that I've been really attracted to recently is the city of Clearwater. And as you all know, Clearwater has a, has had a really hard time redeveloping downtown Clearwater with the US-19 so far to the east, and then with the Scientology in there, that's had a real negative impact, and they've got some really cool, robust programs to